Well, it looks like it's about six o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Shall we? I think everybody's here.
Yeah.
Awesome. Shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, you all have an agenda with a lot of yellow on it. So there's quite a few additions to the agenda. And I'm not going to go through and read each one. You guys all can see that. There's one other that we, I think, talked about here.
10F will add all...
Call it game admission policy.
I have it all. L.O. students into activities at no cost, is what I added.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, could we get a motion to approve those changes?
So, go ahead.
I'll make motion to make the amendments to the agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Second. Thanks, Angie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Now we need an approval, a motion to approve the agenda. It's easy for me to say, right?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Pat. Second. Thanks, Kyle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any type of public input at all? Okay. Moving on. Recognition and good things happening. I'd like to thank you to the staff, students, and community members for making the first few weeks of school such a great success. You are all appreciated. Thank you to the Leroy Lions Club for the breakfast served over the fall in service. Thank you to Kurt Bill for donating a 6x9 carpet remnant to the first grade classroom. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the donors that have contributed in various ways these past months. Is there anything else that anybody can think of that we recognize?
September is actually School Board Recognition Month, so excellent job to all our school board members.
Oh, need to do it our own hard.
There we go.
There we go. Nobody else will do it for us, right?
It was on the website, so.
Okay.
Nice.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to reports. It doesn't look like we have a student representative here tonight.
She is in Rochester, from what I understand.
Okay.
I talked to her today.
But we do have a staff report from Kate Rohr.
I don't know if I'm going to know that case, but I'll get someone this one when I'm done.
Yep.
So, I have been home almost two years in this role. It will be two years.
Wow.
So we've got, I'm starting to finally get in the flow of things, right? Averaging still around seven to 10 hours a week. The max of 10 per week, but two per role, so that's what I've been doing. Some months are more, some months are less. August is a really busy month for me, trying to get the fall schedule out, so that's usually on the higher end, but most of the time, around that seven to eight hours probably. So just walking through each of our programs. So our ECFE program, we hired an ECFE coordinator and parent educator this last year, Liz Locat. We still have our student educator posted, I believe. Is that accurate? No abstinence. So Annie Hungerholt has been wonderfully filling that role until she has decided to give it up, or we can hire someone.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is there, what are the, do you have to be like a licensed teacher for that?
Yes, so technically, yes.
Okay.
So Liz did get a variance for the Tier Two variance, so it's not necessarily required, but I think variances are pretty easy to obtain. So, yes, that is how it's posted, but it does say, "Or obtain a variance." Events, we have Breakfast with Santa every year, so it's the second Saturday in December. We have Touch a Truck, usually in the spring. Art in the Park, we tried this summer, and because of the rain, we just had to cancel it, and we hope to reschedule it sometime this fall yet. We do look for volunteers for all of these events. They take a ton of work during the setup and just running the event, so if anybody wants to volunteer, or wants to volunteer, someone to volunteer. Weekly classes, so since Liz was just hired late last fall, she started classes in January, so we hadn't had them for at least a year and a half, two and a half years. So we lost a lot of our kiddos, and so they didn't get a lot of kids coming that last half of the year last year. She is starting them again next week, so we're hopeful that we can get more kids in. I actually ran into somebody going into the pool for Benita's, you know, kid, or parents' swim lessons, and so I was like, they said they were new to town, and I'm like, who are these little kids? So hopefully, they'll be coming to those classes as well. But we're still trying to promote that and get people here. We did move them to Wednesdays last year to try something different. Wednesdays are a busy night for community ed, so kids are already in the school, parents are already here dropping off. There's no games or anything that parents have to go to, so we did try to do Wednesdays from 5:00 to 6:30. So that will start again next Wednesday, so hopefully more to come in. Preschool, our summer kinder camp program was able to go through this year again. We had nine kids. They made two field trips as part of their Smith grant. They received $5,000 to cover the cost of the program and their field trips. This year, we have, so I did some comparison numbers, just because I had them from last year, and I thought, well, that's kind of fun. So we do have just seven 3-4 preschool, and then we have 17 in our 4-5, and then 11 of those 17 are also in our preschool plus program, which is five days a week. Didn't really add here the VPS info. Maybe you know more about that. I don't even know what VPS stands for, but we are getting through preschool for those attending five days a week that are able to go. So that's exciting. That's a new program this year. I believe we've been trying for many years to get that, so it's exciting. So it does not count towards those kids that do not go five days a week, though. So those kids are still eligible for our scholarships. So we do have the Pathways Scholarship, which we've had for several years now. We again obtained $15,000 for that. And this year, United Way, in years past, we've been getting $600. Last year, we got $1,200. Now this year, we just, we're told we're getting $2,000, so that's exciting. So $17,000 in scholarships to give away to these kiddos, which also helps cover, it covers the cost of preschool, but it also helps cover the cost of our Cardinal Care Program when they're in that on Fridays, and then our Cardinal Kids Program, the before and after school. It can help with some of those things, so that's kind of exciting. I also, last year, took over the finances for preschool. So Tanya wanted to step away and just deal with the kids directly. She didn't want to have to pester parents to pay their bills, so that's my job now. So we're still working through that, and I manage all the scholarships for the program as well. Cardinal Care and Head Start, they received a new coordinator last year, Melissa Monroe. Still teaching with Bev Ferguson. And then Stacy handles all of the Cardinal Care billing aspects of it, so they're a little bit separate there. Our numbers are down this year. We only have seven in Head Start and five in Cardinal Care compared to last year. We still have one full-time teacher, a one-full-time para, and one part-time para, I believe. We did get a new contract this year with Head Start, which was kind of exciting. We worked several months on that, so that went into effect July 1st. There was a lot of back and forth. The school is now receiving a facility fee along with scholarship stipends for our Head Start enrollees. So in years past, Head Start kids would get a Pathways grant through Head Start. Leroy never saw any of that money. So when they, on Fridays, Fridays is not a Head Start day, it's considered a Cardinal Care day, so we were allowing Head Start kids to come for free, essentially to keep them in the district, to keep them here wanting to be part of our program. Now, this year, we will be getting a $1,000 stipend per Head Start kid to help cover those expenses, along with the preschool expenses, because they were also getting preschool for free. So the school is now no longer losing all of that money. We're going to hopefully be close to it.
Getting some back.
But, yeah, so that's exciting for that. And then the facility fee, I believe, is $1,200, so $100 per month, essentially, is what we're going to pay, and that will help upkeep the grounds, so they've got their own Head Start playground that's required to be weeded. The room has to be cleaned daily on a Head Start day, and just some other routine maintenance things, so those will all be taken care of now. Cardinal Kids, our SAC program, our numbers are starting to dwindle a little bit. We noticed it this summer for the first time. We only had 21 kids signed up, which averaged eight to 10 per day. So it was not a lot of kids, but I think what we're discovering is a lot of our kiddos have older siblings that are now staying home with them. I think everyone's maybe feeling a little crunch on the economy, and like, that's one savings that they can do if their older siblings can watch them. Or there's a lot of people working from home. I myself work from home, and my kids were home a lot, too. So I think that just makes a big difference. But enrollment-wise, we are down a little bit from last year to this year, but our staff has currently remained the same. They're not all full-time, but Stacy does a nice job of making sure we're staffed appropriately, so. Activities, so our fall activities, you can kind of see the numbers here in comparison. We're trying several new things this fall. So a couple of different dance classes, expanding on the one we did all of last year for our four year olds, and then adding a cookie class, a cookie decorating class, and then our ghost hunting class, which I'm super excited about. We have nobody signing up.
Hmm.
So unfortunately...
Yeah, scary, scary.
Unfortunately, if we don't get 10 participants for all three of those last classes there, we'll have to cancel them. So I don't like to have to cancel things, but these instructors won't come for less. So hoping we can continue getting people. I sent out another email today reminding people the deadlines are coming, but we'll see. So, a couple of new things that are outside of our activities, so to speak, is the Color Fun Run. So I don't know if you guys know what a color run is. Usually, they are considered a fundraiser. So the Leroy Commercial Club tried to do one this summer with Summer Fest, and it just, I don't think they had enough time in advance to tell people about it, to advertise about it. Their registration system wasn't quite working when it first got out there, and so they only ended up with one family of two registering, so they ended up canceling it. They still have all the materials, so I said, hey, let me help. Let me run it through our community ed program, let me help you advertise. Getting in with those kids and getting a flyer in front of their face really helps. We are up to just 11 right now. I know there's several families that have like, yeah, we're going to do it, they just haven't registered yet. So it is going to go, which is exciting. That will be during the inaugural Fall Fest this year, that's the commercial club is doing. So a color run is basically, there's a route that you can run or walk, where there's certain stations that people then throw color at you, and it essentially colors your shirt and keeps them good, so it's just a fundraiser. Also, part of that same Fall Fest event is our trunk or treat event. This is in collaboration with the Leroy Commercial Club, but community ed and Liz, my ECFE director, she and I are kind of partnering on the whole planning of that event. So we currently have some donations that we've received that will help cover the costs that we're spending, so we are going to have a DJ. Ben Rayburn is going to come DJ for us in the tennis court, so it'll be a little dance party. We're going to get one of those big lights, you know, one of those boom lights to help light up the park, because it's going to get pretty dark, so for safety reasons, probably need that. And then just, we're going to, Community Ed is going to do a little photo booth, too, where everybody can come through and take pictures with their costumes and such. So the donations will help cover those costs for us. We do have a good list of trunks, so I don't know if anybody's been to a trunk or treat, but it's essentially trick-or-treating all in one location. So everybody comes with their trunk, and they decorate their trunk, they hand out candy, and kids just kind of come through and say, "Trunk or treat." So it's just going to be kind of a fun event, get kids out into the park. The community, the commercial club is actually doing a full day of work of events that day in the park, so they're going to have lots of fun kids activities, they're going to have the vendor show for adults, they're going to have the color run, they're also going to have essentially a little parade on UTVs and golf carts, so it should be a fun day. You guys come up. So, all right. We're also going to have the Grove Eats food truck there, so throw your food in the park too. 2024, 2025, planning, just some upcoming things. We've got obviously girls and boys basketball. We'll be doing our after-school bowling again for our elementary kiddos, but this year, it was recommended we do an after-school bowling for our middle-school age kids, so our sixth to ninth graders. Hopefully, we'll be adding that. And then Puzzle Club was another one that was recommended for that kind of middle-school age. We have a hard time with that age group, so hopefully, we can get some interest there. Another suggestion was an iPhone photography class for teens and tweens, so I'm trying to convince Axel Gumbel to teach that. That's some interest, but I'm going to have to investigate something else. And then Crafting with Christie, so she is going to be doing a craft this fall as well. The deadline for that is Monday. Again, that's another one where I'm pretty short on numbers, so I don't know if that will happen, but she has agreed to hopefully do a holiday porch pot class as well, and then we'll do another Crafting with Christie in spring, too, along with soccer, after-school bowling, after-school swim, and then obviously, summer run. At the bottom there is our community ed advisory council, so if you have any ideas for who we could reach out to, or anyone that would be interested for those roles, that's ATBB. We're always looking to grow. And then we have one meeting left for this year, because we meet quarterly, the first Monday of the month. Our next meeting is November 17th.
Awesome. Awesome.
Any questions?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thanks for doing a great job.
Yes, absolutely awesome.
Impressive.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Erin, your turn.
Okay. Let's kind of update our PLC goals. This is kind of our ongoing things we work on, our data diving, the curriculum. One thing I forgot to add for curriculum, I did purchase a mini art curriculum this summer for grades K through 8, since we don't have an actual art program, what I did is buy supplies and lessons for them, so they can integrate it into their teaching, so I did give that out to the eighth grade. So I'm excited to see how teachers utilize that and get some art in their classes for some of these kiddos. So continue with RCD, Marzano, and then the newest thing, we'll be focusing, obviously, all year long, to be the Read Act. Read Act, jumping down, our first training isn't until October 21st, it's a Monday after MEA. So once we get that first training, I will know more about the Read Act. Our expectations are, right now, all I had to do was register the teachers, and then we'll find out what our year's going to look like after the 21st, so I'll have, that's probably after, or maybe I'll have information for that Tuesday if that's the school board meeting, but I'll keep you guys posted on the Read Act. Homecoming week is next week. Larry Thompson did, I know we talked about this, I don't know if Jen had on her agenda to change, but he did agree he can make it that Monday, so if we want to change, so if we can change that board meeting to Monday, November 11th, he will stay throughout the day and present it to the school board that evening on RCD. CNA update, I'm just guessing, we're going to have issues with the mail building moving into next year for our CNA program. They did shut the water on us without letting us know, and we panicked for a little bit until a few phone calls and emails later, and the mail not knowing I knew Nick Sweeney down at the city, just go turn the water back on. So they did agree for us to let us use the mail building for this year. We know that's for sale, they don't have, the lady I talked to said that right now they don't have any interest, but they're trying to find interest, so they're proceeding to be actively getting it. I think there's, I think they kind of want to shut it down and winterize it and just kind of close her up. It's kind of what my impression I got. So I'll keep you posted if that happens in the spring, because then we'll need to be looking for a new location for our CNA program. So, but we are up in, this year, we actually had a waiting list, and actually, they talked about some extra financials with that, too. So it's kind of a good, it's a very good program, and people are utilizing it, so that's good. Other than that, just really, September was getting the swing of things, getting schedules all set, getting the teachers' kiddos all set up, so once October rolls around, that's kind of when we get into, we start our PLCs, I start my monthly meetings, we start diving more into our information, so I'm off and running, seems to be going pretty well, so like I said, that's kind of what we got planned, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Does it sound like there's any, Erin? Thank you very much. Gin, super tinnitus report.
All right. Well, I have quite a bit to share tonight, but, so bear with me a little bit here. First thing I really want to hit home with is, you know, we really talk heavily with our staff about this, too, but you guys are CC'd on various emails, but it's our school safety, you know, and so we send that out regularly to remind our staff of prioritizing safety, even prioritizing that more than learning and teaching in our environment here. So just expect a lot of emails, you know, throughout the summer, or, I'm sorry, throughout the school year, but we do. We prioritize our school safety, whether it's in the classroom, in the hallway, or in our, on our grounds. We also, just so you know, in terms of state law, we do hold safety fire, or safety drills, school safety drills, whether they're fire, or, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, but there's five lockdowns, five fire, and one tornado drill. Five-five-one. And so we'll be doing that throughout the year. We also, and unfortunately, it's kind of nowadays, we have to talk about, we talk about cybersecurity, too, and all of you were involved in that email I sent out as well, but those are friendly reminders we sent out. And we can't stress it enough, if there are community members that feel something is unsafe on our grounds, or want to talk to us about safety, we are here to listen, and we surely want to make it a great place for everybody, so please pass the word on that. Sprinkler system each year, we have that checked, and sure enough, we passed with flying colors. If you ever want to see reports like that, let me know. We do have them safely secured in our office, but please, let me know, and I can track it down for you. MINDOT inspection, I have to send out a huge congratulations and great job to John Stockdale. He passed his MINDOT inspection, or our fleet did, with 100% accuracy. So cheers to John. That is a hard thing to do, and John does a great job every year, maybe with one ding here or there, but this year was a big deal, considering we have, you know, an aging fleet, he's kept it maintained, and he met all the standards, so congratulations to him. Another congratulations to our two students who are in the play that we combine efforts with, with Southland. So last Friday, they performed, and I'm just hearing rants and raves about how great it was. Maybe Deb, you could talk about that a little bit later, too. I hate to do this, but every September, October, and November, I will remind everybody, including our community, about weather, and make sure everybody is on our weather system communications, and all they need to do is reach out to our office, and we will help set them up with either text messages, emails, whatever it may be. We also promote that we do put all our weather activity online, on Facebook, but also in the media, so they'll know about all that as well. Quick shout-out, on Tuesday, October 15th, from 1:00 to 7:00, there is a blood drive at the Leroy Ostrander Community Center, at the community center, and so we're looking at some possible kids helping, you know, volunteer their time there, too, so if you see them, thank them for that. Also, Barb Payne is doing a great job. Congratulations and shout-out to her. She has taken on our safety patrol role this year, and she has been so great at communicating and recruiting students and staff to help. If you ever have time, it is kind of a fun job. I know Deb helps a lot with that, but it's really fun to see those kids in the morning and the afternoons. You're kind of the first and last person they see, and so if you ever have interest, please get ahold of Barb Payne, but great job to her. We did, of course, get our rooftop fall hazard assessment this year as well. I know I'm bouncing all over here, and I apologize, but that came back very well. We do have to clean up a couple leaves and stuff, and that's pretty common in the fall, so just know if somebody's up there, we are doing that. But here's a report on that. If you ever want to see it, again, come find me, I have them. As Kate mentioned, the community is doing Fall Fest. I was asked to be part of the, what did they call it? Pie in the Face Contest, but unfortunately, it's during the weekend, I'm, I think I'm way far away for a football game, so I was pretty lucky. But I did indicate, we have quite a few board members and administrators that would love to be part of it, so I think you'll all be giving a contact email about that.
Do they have a pie week or something?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I'm at that same football game.
Are you? Okay, so you think you might be. Yes. So anyway, but yes, it's supposed to be a really, really fun time, and I so appreciate the offer, but I'm going to hand it off to all of you.
We can make that happen all the time, Jen.
Huh?
I bet we can make it that fit in your schedule.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, right. Couple more things. Erin mentioned the Read Act. He's done a great job of really pushing MDE. We've talked to you about the Read Act many, many times, and our frustrations with not only getting developed in the new legislation, but also, is there fiscal management with this? Is there a policy that comes with this? Even our policy committee has talked about it numerous times. Just handed out to you the PowerPoint I was going to give to you last year. Well, here it is. I kind of shortened it a little bit. You guys can share it for now, I'm sure more will be coming, but kudos to Erin. He, I don't know how many emails you have sent out to MDE, and they kept getting a little bit more salty each email that he sent, so maybe that was good? Maybe that was good. Got some stuff done. Let's see, couple other things. So one of our teachers is interested in creating a robotics club. I just handed off to Kate, thinking that might be a partnership, but if you are hearing about that, start recruiting some of our kids. But it is really exploding across the nation. We received a great PowerPoint from this teacher, and he's extremely interested in starting this, so we're doing everything we can to recruit it and get it into the hands of the kids, and hopefully Kate can maybe help with community ed stuff, too, and her marketing skills, so. Finally, you did all see this, this was also posted on Facebook, but we really want to remind our communities of all the great things that we do here with our kids. No doubt, we still have places where we need to work on things, and we have weaknesses, but we also have a lot of strengths, and we feel that our communications, all the student activities, all the student successes that we have, to get students successful academically and behaviorally, we have implemented here. So take a peek at that. It's on our website, but also on Facebook. That's probably our biggest media spot to have it, but if you want a copy, I have some, too. Two more things. The pool manager position, which you will be approving tonight, the resignation, we have, of course, advertised, as my emails to all of you have stated, in various media outlets, but also locally, in terms of our website, internally, and our Facebook page. I'm going to up that posting again, just so you're aware, on Friday, that this opportunity could potentially, we don't know at this point, but potentially be combined with maybe another opportunity in our school. Also, I did talk to the former director of the pool. The school district did pay for her licensing years and years and years ago, and so I'm going to also post that on the website. So if a person does go get this done and applies, they have to first apply and get the job for us to reimburse them, we're going to put that in the posting, too. So just so you know, the posting will be out again, and we're going to spend some more money on marketing in the newspapers, too, but we're doing the best we can. Finally, and I open this up to everybody, some concerns about the highway project out in front of the school. As many of you are aware, and many of you attended the city meetings, and I really, really appreciate the city to invite us into all of those. They've done a fantastic job of communicating that. But Erin and I probably were at three or four, I know Angie, you were at one, and I believe Deb, you were, and probably you guys were, too. But we had talked about the, really, the significant importance of having a cutout in front of our school. We assumed a cutout meant literally you cut the sidewalk out, and so people can drive into it, almost park out of the street, so then they could drop off kids. Currently, if you look in front of our school, it is a straight line. There is no true, in my definition, or Webster's definition, cutout. So Mr. Hungerholt and I have been very, very busy, I'd say since Friday, he saw this happen Friday, since last Friday, probably five or six communications to the State Department to tell us what is going on here. Did we not understand? What is a cutout, then, in their definition? Just help us understand what's going on, or can we clean this up before it gets too far? So just wanted to open up to you, if you guys have seen concerns as well, if we need to back off a little bit and let things happen the way it happens, open it up to all of you. We would love some direction.
They cut down the trees for it.
Yeah.
We said that, and that's one of it. One, they cut down our trees, but also, this is just one little thing, and again, we don't work for the highway department, so we're just, we're new and green with this, don't get me wrong. So I apologize if I'm offending anybody. There's also, it seemingly seems, I'll say it twice, that there isn't handicapped accessibility there, either, which is a bit bothersome to us. So, I apologize if I'm offending anybody. There's also, it seemingly seems, I'll say it twice, um, that there isn't handicapped accessibility there, either, which is a bit bothersome to us. That's what it seems like at this moment in time. Now, not to say it's not, it could be there, we're just not seeing it right now. Um, so there's a variety of things that I'm pretty concerned about. I know Erin is very concerned about. Um, and so we, again, like I said, we'd love discussion right now with all of you, during my discussion point.
Is it possible to, to get a meeting with the project manager?
We're trying. Hence, my phone calls, his emails, my email.
I would assume he or she, whatever, is here.
There's a she and a couple he's.
They passed me on, I talked to two people, and I've emailed three. And the last one, they emailed, they passed me on to the design engineer now, um, about this cut-in. So, everybody seems to have no idea. Um, they're trying to explain that we do get two extra feet on our side of the road, compared to the other side of the road. So, that's all I could get out. So, you got your two main lanes, this will explain to me on Friday. It's two main lanes, the other side of the road is like 10 feet, like where you park or whatever. And then our side, they gave us an extra two feet, so our side is actually 12 feet. So, that was their definition of, oh yeah, there's four lanes.
So, the only way it's visible is just that they don't put the center line during the, down the center of the road, it's more toward one side, yeah.
So, they showed me there, but I said, we've been talking about this for two to three years, and every plan that I saw, had, it was a very extensive cut-in, like very grown out.
That you pull in.
And, uh, nobody seems to have that planned. And like, oh, you must've talked to this person, or you must've talked to that, or you must, it just gets kicked down the road. And then my last email was, I added the handicap piece, 'cause there's no, there's no.
It's all solid curved.
Yeah, if you see the driveways all been cut in, but there's no handicap accessible piece anywhere in front of our building.
That's ridiculous.
So, that should've, in my opinion, they're not coming back to chisel out.
No.
So, and but I, the last email I got was to the, they pushed me off to the, the design engineer, and I have not heard back.
They are coming back. I mean, they should be coming back.
Right.
I mean, that's the only way we could notice that it was wrong in our eyes, is after they poured the curb.
Poured, yes.
Right.
Correct.
Yes.
Cause we went to no one without that.
So, that was after the day they were pouring the curbs, and we saw.
And that's when he called me.
Yeah.
And then we started making phone calls and emails.
And then all the guys on there on their plans, is what it looks like, so.
But even if they don't have the cut-in, they don't even have it dipped down so that people can come up onto it.
Right, right.
No.
Well, that's ridiculous.
And they're giving us an eight-foot cement boulevard sidewalk. I don't know why we need an eight-foot sidewalk.
Again, like Dave said, why did you take out our trees, then? We don't need an eight-foot wide sidewalk.
So, we're all cut out now.
Yeah, cause they left this tree.
Mm-hmm.
It's in line with the other ones.
Yeah.
All those trees could've stayed.
So, the rest of that will be eight feet of cement, will be the sidewalk.
Why?
But no way for people to be up on there.
No.
I mean.
And there's really not a place to pull, technically pull off any different than what we were used to.
In the state of the front of the building before they did this, we did have the handicap. So, they, they need to match that.
Yeah, that's what we thought, right away. Like, this doesn't seem right.
You would think in front of a school, that's like a mandatory piece.
Yes.
You would think. I mean, I guess I'm not.
So, they're well aware from our, we're gonna, if you don't mind, maybe that's my question. If you don't mind, we're gonna keep pursuing. You may get nasty grams about us, but we don't care at this point.
They're gonna get it anywhere, they can still deal with the state.
Yeah, we're gonna try.
The state, it's in, I mean.
Well, it's too bad we didn't know that this is what they're gonna do, they, before they actually.
Right.
Like I said, we didn't see until they poured the curb.
Because it was already so wide, we were like, oh, good, it's working. Like, we, when it was all gravel at that point, it was fine. Last week, it was fine, until Friday, when the curb went in. Then it was like, wait a minute, something's not right, so.
Yeah, I looked at it over the weekend, and saw that doesn't look like I thought it was supposed to look.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they talked about having to move the sidewalk and everything to put that.
That's right.
That's why those trees had to come out.
Well, then we had numerous discussions about delivery trucks being able to pull off for the kitchen. Because they did put that cutout, or they put that driveway, where the, where that sidewalk goes up to the kitchen.
Yep.
They did put that there.
The approach for the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, but that was one of the big conversations, and they didn't even.
In the same conversation?
Yeah, same conversation, so.
So, they did part of it, but not the other part.
But I don't know why we needed eight-foot boulevard and a two-foot extra. I mean, we only got two feet extra.
So, I think overall, the street is narrower than it was, isn't it?
I don't know, it'll be, I don't know how wide the normal lane is for a car. How wide's the normal lane?
I would assume that'd be 10 feet.
Yeah, that's probably right.
Yeah, he said, oh, you got four lanes out there.
It does not seem like a four-lane highway to me. I've been in LA.
So, that's what, like I said, my last email was to the design person, and I haven't heard back.
Sounds like a daily, uh.
Cause the guys out front are not.
Contact with those people.
The guys out front.
It's been daily since Friday.
Until you get to the.
Including Saturdays and Sundays, we're trying.
Well, yeah, I'm sure the, the laborers, they get told 100 different things throughout the day.
Well, they follow the plans, and they follow the plans.
Yeah.
That they have now.
Well, we saw plans earlier on that showed a full cutout.
Yes, thank you. Yep, Dave just saw them tonight, yes.
You've seen them now?
Yep.
Okay.
At the bare minimum, we need some sort of.
That's what we have here.
And I think, I think, uh, Tom Bostick and Kyle, I think Nick Sweeney had the same conversation, or concerned with them about it, too, and they told him the same thing. So, 'cause he was, we were talking about the same thing, and he talked to him the same day, and they're like, no, that's not supposed to be, so. They told the city the same.
Well, maybe we'll be taking a trip to the State Highway Department in person to, to get.
I'd be willing to do that.
Some answers.
Mm-huh.
If nobody will respond to you now, so.
The first two were, they passed me out. So.
I'm sure there's things that can be done to, to apply a little leverage.
Yeah.
Well, that's too bad. Not surprising, there's always.
Right.
Something.
Something with the project, so.
Okay.
But yes, we'll continue to loop you in on that. Um, you know, we may even send an email off, cc-ing all of you, and then indicating, uh, the dates of all our phone numbers and emails that have already been sent. So, then they're aware, this isn't just a one email that we've sent you. We've sent you and phone-called you, you know, all these times, with no response, or not the correct response, you know? We also want the correct response, so. But we will keep you posted on that, so, otherwise, thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jen on any of that? Okay, thanks Jen. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, we had the meeting minutes from last month. Um, are there any corrections or additions to those?
Looks good.
Okay. Uh, treasures reports, any questions on any of that? Okay. Uh, fundraisers, it looks like, um, Cheerleading wants to sell pom-poms next week. Uh, One Act Play is selling tickets for the Haunted House. And Soke Senior, that sounds like fun. Um, so, there's some fundraisers. Uh, donations, uh, it looks like, uh, Ed and Nick Bunny donated some sand for the playgrounds. We appreciate that very much. And, um, the community foundation, uh, donated $12,500 towards that trailer that we talked about last month. So, that was awesome.
Very nice, by the way.
It is so nice, yes. And it's being used.
Yep.
It's actually being used, so thank you.
I actually saw it, over in Alden. Um, personnel, uh, we need to accept the resignation of Lindsay Milks as the, uh, pool manager. Um, we need to accept the resignation of Cassandra Fallhaber as paraprofessional. Um, approve the Activities Department, recommendation to hire Erin as a JV boys' basketball coach. Um, approve the Activities Department, recommendation to hire Ryan Evans as varsity head girls' basketball coach. Uh, approve the Activities Department, recommendation to hire Lindsay Milks as junior high boys' basketball coach. Approve the Activities Department, recommendation to hire Amanda Cisco as junior high girls' basketball coach. Um, we need to approve the Activities Department, recommendation to hire volunteer volleyball coach, Kristin Stevens.
Not actually, is it hire and volunteer, hire, or she's volunteer?
Uh.
Oh, volunteer, I apologize.
That's probably, yeah.
So, to.
Take out hire.
To accept her as volunteer, okay.
Yep, yep.
Very good. Were you an English teacher?
I'm not, but it just jumped out at me.
Um, all right, then we need to accept the resignation of Angie Olson as junior varsity volleyball coach. Um, approve the Activities Department, recommendation to hire Amanda Cisco as head JV volleyball coach. Um, accept the resignation of Eileen Voyna as paraprofessional. And approve, uh, recommendation to hire Justin Stevens as head boys' basketball coach. All right, that's kind of a mouthful, all that.
Yeah.
So, is there any questions on any of the, uh, the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? And then probably add into that motion, just a, a thank you for those donations, and that we appreciate those donations.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and also thank you to Ed and Nick Bunny for the sand donation, and the community foundation for the trailer purchase.
Thanks Kyle, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you Dave. Um, any discussion on any of that? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Epstein.
With one Epstein, uh, motion carried. Okay, um, policy review. So, um, we need to approve the first reading of policy 501, 502, 504, 505, 508, and 509. Anything that, uh, anyone from the Policy Committee would like to say about any of those policies?
Nope, we, we double-checked all the red lines, and they're all updated, so.
Okay.
They're good.
Sounds good. Someone like to make a motion to approve the first reading of those previously stated policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 501, 502, 504, 505, 508, and 509.
Okay, thank you Pat, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Angie. Any, any discussion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, all right. Uh, second reading of the policies, uh, 503, 506, 507, 522, and 806. Were there any changes that needed to be made since the first reading?
Uh, there's no change, but, um, in policy 503, on student attendance, um, it's, it says in here that, um, if you look at the attendance procedures, it says, look, see the elementary and middle school handbooks to, to, um, it isn't repeated in here as to what the, it's, uh, okay. Attendance procedures, it says, excuse absence, see elementary and middle school student handbooks. And all we put down is that each year, when those handbooks are re, you know how we do them in June, July, August, somewhere in there, that we always look to make sure that it's encompassing all the things that we want it to encompass from this. No, no real changes, just that we're always gonna dou, always gonna double-check our handbooks.
Referencing the handbook.
Mm-hmm, yep, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion to approve the second reading of those policies?
Make a motion to approve second reading of 503, 506, 507, 522, and 806.
Okay, thank you Kyle, is there a second?
I'll say. I'll second.
Okay, thanks Dave. Um, any, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, um, need to approve the truth and taxation date of December 17th at 6:01 PM. Formality that we go through every year. Someone that can make a motion to do that?
I move to approve the truth and taxation date to be December 17th at 6:01 PM.
Thank you Deb, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Angie. Any questions before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, all right. Um, all right, the levy, which, uh, Jen just handed out this evening, 'cause she literally just got it, like, what, 15 minutes before the meeting?
Dave was in my office, Angie was too, saying a little. So, it is fresh, but I want you to make some notes on it, okay? The biggest note I want you to take away from any levy discussion is that these are all, in front of you, are estimates until September 30th. MDE has rights to change these numbers. So, that's why tonight on your agenda, we say approve it at the max. Whatever the max is, that's what we want. And you guys have done that for years, long before I was here, so that's nothing new. Um, but just know, at the end of September, every year, September 30th, counties and the state need to have our levy report in, okay? So, um, eventually, I'm gonna be tracking Angie down before the end of September to get her signature on this max levy, whatever it is. Um, so, but a couple things I want you to know. If you look, uh, if you go to, if it's down in front of you, the right-hand side of your page is at 229,487. Do you all see that number?
Where is it?
Yes.
Last column.
Last column, maximum levy limitation, it says.
Other page, other side, maybe Deb? That'll be helpful, if I look at the right side, thank you.
Yep, first page, uh, 229,487. I just want you to realize, that number, we already know for sure, will be replaced with 279,006.63. That's because it's a lease adjustment, okay? And that's a good thing. What that means is, that's gonna add to the total levy amount, which you see in the first column, okay, on that first page. It's gonna actually bump it up 2.95% to 1,258,131.64. Um, again, it might go up a little bit more, maybe down a little bit, but not in terms of this lease levy. So, that's one thing we did indicate, um, on the big 700-page levy we get, that is indicated there. Now, on this run, though, 15 minutes before, it wasn't there yet, it will be, it will be. So, I didn't wanna run the 700 pages for you, so, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you. So, yeah, so, that's good news, good news. We did not drop in our levy. Keep in mind, the levy is about your people and your community, right? So, they are, they're coming here, or they're staying here, you know? Or, property values are, are maintaining roughly the same, and that's what this is for. But like I said, and I really can't stress this enough, this will change by September 30th. Hopefully, it'll maintain, um, and, or just move the needle slightly. Um, but we always know by September 30th, something will come up, something will. If it's really significant, where it's like, we gotta have a conversation, I will immediately let you know, but if it's minor percentage points, I don't even worry about it, because I know things will change by the next year, anyway. Uh, but just so you know, it already has, by the time I ran the report.
So, then in December, we'll approve the actual numbers.
The actual numbers will be in December, that's right, that's right. Exactly right. Yeah, so tonight, we just need you to certify it at max, so then we are covered.
Does this have to be, uh, a resolution, or?[1702.25]
I believe it's just a roll call. Yep, and then, yep.
All right, so what we need to do is have a motion to approve the levy at the maximum, tonight.
I'll make motion to approve the levy at the maximum.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Pat. Roll call, Deb?
Yes.
Dave, yes. Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Let's catch your name for a second. Yes?
Yes.
And Angie, yes?
That's a sign of right, Dave.
Yeah. All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, okay, so this would be November meeting, changing that to November 11th instead of the 12th, correct?
Uh, actually, no, it's a week ahead.
Can we...
Ooh, wait a minute. No, election day, we can't.
Right, but I'm like, that's...
The canvassing of the election, so the election is on...
The 5th?
Yep.
And it has to be done within...
Seven.
Seven days.
Seven to 10 days.
So if our meeting is on the 11th, that works?
Which also puts, what's his name?
Larry.
Yeah.
Right?
Which is why we were looking at the 11th rather than the 12th, cause Larry was already gonna be here.
Yep.
Correct. Right? Okay, so, is everybody okay with the 11th at 6:00 PM? So that'd be a Monday, correct?
Yep.
Yep, think so.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve, uh, November meeting to be November 11th at 6:00 PM?
I'll make the motion to have it on November 11th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thanks, Kyle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Before we go to committee reports, let's, uh, let's talk about the game admission policy that Kyle wanted to bring up. If you wanna fill us in on what you're talking about there, Kyle?
So with this co-op with Lyle and Pacelli, they have in their policies that all students are free admission to any home games, which, uh, Leroy is the home site for their football. Our students are just, if you're in fall sport, you're, you're free, which pretty much wipes out the entire elementary, which where I've been here, and, you know, that these kids have to pay, and the Lyle kids were having to pay. I think we want those, we want our kids supporting our activities. So I, I think we go ahead and fall activities are free for all students.
That would be for all activities?
I, I do.
All sports?
I, I don't think we can say only fall and not carry it in the winter, do you?
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
No, I, I don't think so either.
I'd say just make it for the whole... And if issues come up, we just... Yep. Talk about it again. Yep.
Yep.
It's not a big deal. I like it. I would support you guys in that.
And, you know, that could be things that are holding these, these families back from bringing, you know, it adds up fast when they gotta go to the away games and bringing three or four kids with you, you know? I know another thing we do that we could look at changing is all seniors are free, which my wife takes tickets for, has for quite a few years, and she's had, these away, the away seniors are also, they very, they like that, they're happy about it, because it doesn't, it's not like that anywhere else, it's just, you know, the home seniors are free, and, and everybody else has to pay. So if, if down the line, we wanna ma- make up some of that loss, that would be a, a way, I mean, there still could be a discount for those away seniors, but, um... You know?
This is, this is not a big issue, but I, I just wanna mention it. There will be a number of families who have already paid to have their kids go to all the games.
Right.
So...
Oh, but, well, the season pass.
Yeah. Not that, I, I'm not opposed to it, I think it's a good idea, but, you know...
That's a good point.
You know, do we refund that if they wanna refund?
How do we know they attended and all of that?
Well, we don't, I mean, I know a number of families who just pay every year for their families to go to all the sports. You know, it might not be an issue, but some people might be like, I just paid for my family to go $60, $120 or whatever, and, and now it's all free. So, you know, I don't know if we wanna offer to give it back to them, or, doesn't matter whether they went or not, if they've, you know? I don't know, I'm just saying.
The parent would still have to cover their cost.
Right.
I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So when you buy that family pass, it, it's...
But sometimes you buy it just for the student.
Right.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's gonna be a big deal, but I can see that some people would be like, hey, I paid for my kids to have a season's pass. Yeah, the family, the adults would still have to pay.
Right.
Do we know who those people are that want the pass?
Well, yeah, yeah, they do.
Nikki would.
Yeah.
They do, because they have, they have a list of them so that the kids can come in free, so they have...
And when I saw the list on Friday, the first football, it was not big.
Yeah. So...
So I, I think, yeah, at this point, refund them their...
You could just contact the family and say, hey, do you wanna, do you want us to refund you, or do you wanna just put it to the...
Put it toward next year, or...
Or put it towards, whatever.
Well, it's still the adult, the, the adult family members getting it, you know, they paid for their portion of the pass, you know?
Right. I just know there's some families where they just paid for the kids to go.
Okay.
And then the parents just paid when they could come, but they paid for their kids to go the whole year.
Yep.
Especially in your high school, you know, you have 500 basketball games. You know, a lot of high school kids wanna go to the basketball games, the parents don't go to all of them, so they just get a separate student.
Yeah.
I don't know how many it is, but I know there are some.
Trevor's up, he put five, maybe five.
Okay, so...
It's, it's small, because the list was about this big with a list of names, so it's not many, but, so it would, right, right.
Then I think we should refund their money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate, if somebody has an issue.
I think it's appropriate to contact those families and just say, we're gonna go to a new policy, do you wanna refund, or are you good?
Yep.
Just be polite, you know, put it out, give them the opportunity, and...
I think it's a great way to encourage our students to be at the games.
Yep.
I like it.
Yep.
But then I think maybe there needs to be a little, like, let's make sure that they're not just jacking around the whole game, you know? Cause there's a few that... It is a event for the school district, not a babysitting arena. Yeah, yeah, yes.
There's just some things you just can't plan for, right?
Is there an age limit to what a student can come to an event unattended, is it...
I wanna say it's...
Fifth grade?
Sixth grade without a...
I think it's fifth grade.
The fifth grade and under has to have a, like, an adult supervisor, right?
Something like that, they said somewhere.
Yeah.
It does, I remember reading it.
So we might just have to be strict on that for a little while till it settles in, you know what I mean? Like you said, it's not a babysitting arena, so we might just have to be strict at, like, where's your parent? You know, if they're under fifth, fifth grade or under. Just initially.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay.
I like it.
Well, good idea, Kyle. Would you like to make a motion to make that a policy?
I will make a motion that all, all LO students have free admission to all LO activities.
Home games.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Didn't we stuff that in on the consent agenda?
No, it was 10, we put it as 10 and a half.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Okay, all home...
All home activities.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, Angie. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, thank you. Moving on to committee reports, anybody got, uh, committee reports that we have this around?
On the Minnesota School Board Association website, there's a lot of good information on there this month. The 2025 Leadership Conference is coming up, the 16th and 19th, 16th through the 19th of January. There's opportunities to, to submit submissions on, on the forum online. There's a lot of, a lot of good, um, school board building, new school board member building activities on that. And, um, there's some good articles on the election, uh, election coming up. And again, it is school board recognition, so there's some nice testaments from school board members from around the state on there, so it's...
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else?
I'd like to report from the Maurer County Collaborative. We had a, one of our executive meetings on, yesterday, and, um, they, we decided to continue using the funding for the Maurer County Collaborative, to continue using the funding the same as it has been done in the previous years. There has been a discussion about dividing up the money in different ways. But if we start dividing up the money, we no longer can afford to fund the family facilitators. And so we, as a group, and through lots of discussion, decided to continue for a year, a full year, funding the family facilitators. There used to be four, the funding keeps dwindling as it does everywhere in education, and so they only, we can only have two facilitators. So therefore, it means we get less, I mean, we get less services because there's only two people instead of four. But an important thing that they do for us, our schools, is they come to all of our preschool screenings. And that is a really important time where they meet, they, it's the first contact for a lot of families, and so they can really tell them what other services might be available, just helps to catch, it's just an excellent opportunity for families to have that first exposure. And so, we really don't wanna lose that from our family facilitators. What we're going to attempt to do, there's an odd way that the money comes in to this, and it's by, schools are contacted by, you have these contact people. And then they're contacted, and there's, and the schools, let's say the person is our social worker, she gets a phone call saying, what you doing right now? And she'll be like, I'm working with whatever, that's, that counts, you know? And so like, it's, it's by these random moments, that's how the money comes in. So what we're, as a group, are gonna try to do is in each school district, we're gonna look at, is there a couple more people in our school district who could be a, a random moments person? Um, and so we're looking at, there's a criteria and everything. But then maybe that more phone calls can come, more times that they've caught a random moment throughout our entire, um, area, collaborative area of Maurer County, then maybe more money will come in, then maybe we can start dividing it up in some other ways. Does that make sense? So, it's gonna be a 16-month study to see if we can increase our revenue, is basically what it is. And, but during that same time, we are not messing with the formula as it is now and keeping the two family facilitators. So, that is what I have for you.
Anything else? Anybody else got any committee reports?
We have scholarship tailgate supper on the Friday night of homecoming from 5:00 to 7:00.
Lions are having tailgate this Friday.
Yeah.
That'll all be in the Cardinal Courtyard.
It'll be in the Cardinal Courtyard, weather providing.
Looks like a beautiful day.
I know, it's supposed to be beautiful, yeah. And I can't find my copy of who's on the meet committee, but who's on the committee for, um, meeting with the teachers? Meet and confer, are you and you?
Yep.
And me.
Yeah, okay, we should set up something for October. How...
Yep.
Yeah, to meet with them, cause now school's underway, and that would be a good thing. So, should I contact, how, how do we go, shall I contact someone and then say, give us a couple of dates, and then we'll see what we can do?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Chrissy's.
Chr- is Chrissy's?
Out.
Out, yeah, so I, who would be next is...
They did not name a president.
Okay, all right, all right, well, we'll kinda look into that, because I think that...
If you wanna send it to me...
Yeah.
Then I can send it out.
Just saying, this committee from the school board...
Yep.
Open to having a meet and confer sometime in October, what are some dates that would work for you?
Just send that to me, and I will...
Send it out.
Well, and I'll walk around and say, who is my named president?
Yeah.
Cause I know.
Yeah, but I think this is a good time of the year, they're kinda settled in, and, you know, October's a good time for them to have, do a meet and confer.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Anything else? Any other committee reports at all? Okay. All right, well, it looks like, uh, district calendar update, looks like, um, October 8th is Policy Committee meeting. October 17th through the 18th is MEA break. October 21st, staff development, there's no school. November 5th is Election Day, be sure you vote. November 7th is the end of the first quarter. November 8th, staff development, no school, and, uh, the next, or the November meeting will be the 11th, not the 12th. Heard the change, so, anything else that we need to talk about tonight? Anybody's got? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thanks, Angie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kyle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
7:05.